Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
I can. I'm not going to use my headphones. Hi, is that Alicia? I can't even see you under that mask. All right, sorry about the light. I haven't quite figured it out, but I'm hoping it kind of blurs the...
That's just me saying I'm in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, I gotta make sure I have a pen. Okay. So we got... Here comes my kid. Where's Trevor, Victoria?
Yeah, I can hear him looking for me out there. I'm gonna go open my door a little so he won't scream at the door. Hold on. Where are we with time? Okay. John, Alicia, Kyle.
Will Michelle be joining us just a little later?
She is supposed to be here, so I am going to wait for a minute or two until I see her. And then if we don't give her a little bit more time, I know she had a work meeting.
Yeah.
And then was... Coming from that, so... And I haven't received a text for her, from her yet. She's not gonna be available, so I'm assuming that she is on her way. Excuse me. Okay, is that Michelle? I don't know, I'm just viewing your screen right now, Kyle.
Yes, you should just be able to see the...
Agenda. Thank you, that's helpful.
Is that right?
Yeah. Where am I? There I am. All right, well, I'll give up one more minute for Michelle, and then if she's not here, we can include her when she's... When she makes it. Give her a text. I like your mask, Kyle.
Thank you.
Me too, that's a good one, Kyle. Okay. Okay. Well, it is 5:33, so I think we'll just get started, and I'm sure we'll hear from Ms. Minio shortly. So, in accordance with Ohio revise code 121.22 and House Bill 197, I hereby call to order the Board of Education and Wexley City School District Special School Board meeting for Thursday, September 17, 2020. Mr. Smith, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barnum.
Here.
Ms. Mitchell. Ms. Powers.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here.
And Ms. Minio.
Here.
Oh, you are there. I couldn't, I couldn't see you.
I snuck in.
Oh, good work, Michelle. Okay, thank you. And so can I have a motion to approve our agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Before we go into executive session, I just want to note that, as we have done throughout this pandemic, I just wanted to note that we are again tonight adjusting our own personal meeting attendance on Zoom according to the safety and welfare of our own board members and our community at large. To that end, you will notice I am not in the school building, but rather at home in my son's room, which is empty now that he's in college. I will be in isolation here until September 21st, 25th, sorry, because despite taking rigorous precautions as recommended by the CDC, I have tested positive for COVID-19. I wanted to be open and honest with our community about this because I believe complete transparency on this topic is essential during this pandemic to keep everyone as safe as possible, and I want to continue to try and lead by example. I also want to report that I have contacted the school since it means that my daughter, who is a senior, will also have to, will have to quarantine for 14 days along with my husband here in our home. I want to use this opportunity to implore all of our community members to report student COVID-19 quarantines from exposure or positive tests to the school. I believe this is all of our civic duty because timely and accurate reporting of student cases is the only way we are going to be able to mitigate the risks of exposure and have our students back in our buildings for the full support of their educational community. We are all in this together, and that means we all have to work together to keep each other safe. Finally, it also helps explain why my voice is not as strong as tonight, and I greatly appreciate my fellow board members' assistance as we work through this agenda. So, given all that, I would like to entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Ms. Snowden, we still need to vote on the agenda, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Smith, thank you. So can I have a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
In a second. Thank you. All right, and then for our, thank you, so for executive session, tonight I need a motion to approve...
We'll still need a roll call on the...
On...
On the agenda.
Oh, we need a roll call vote on the agenda?
Well, not a roll call, just a vote, sorry.
Oh, a motion and second. Right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, everyone. Not getting a lot of sleep right now. But I am moving along. Tylenol's a really good thing. Okay, so... Can I have a motion to move into executive session in order to consider items with respect to a public employee or official in regards to employment or, and/or compensation and all matters considered to be kept confidential under federal law or regulation or state statute?
So...
Second.
Thank you. Is that a roll call, Mr. Smith?
I know.
All right, all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion carries, thank you. So now we will be moving into executive session on another platform. We will come back when and if we have, we can discuss matters in public session and, sorry, in executive session, but we cannot make deliberations. We have to do those in public, so we will come back to do that in public if we look to make any decisions tonight. So I don't have a time estimate for that, but the Zoom meeting will be kept open during our entire executive session, so you'll know when we come, come back. Okay, so board members, if you could please move on to the other platform, we will reconvene there.
Okay. Thank you, everybody for your patience. We are going to...
Marley, I can't hear you. Are you talking?
I am, and I think I'm unmuted. Can you not hear me?
You hear her?
I can hear her, yeah.
You might be unmuted.
Well, but her muting shouldn't...
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
But I can't hear her.
Maybe it's something with your...
Oh, now I know what's the problem. I need my little tech guy, Christopher.
Yeah, I know.
So he can walk away and roll his eyes.
Okay, so now we have everyone but Michelle. Or is Michelle on there and I can't see her?
I don't think we have her yet.
Okay, and I am going to pop over here. We'll just wait for Ms. Minio for a minute, and then we'll be back on.
She's on.
Okay, great. Thank you. So Kyle, do I need a motion to start this meeting again? Or is in it, right?
You do need a motion to publicly exit executive session.
Can I have a motion to exit executive session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing, same sign. Okay, thank you. That motion carries. So for our community members, I just wanted to note that while the board wants to be respectful of Dr. Miller and the amazing work that she's done for our district, and as she considers a new position, which she informed us about, as you all know, a few weeks ago, we also need to begin to plan our next steps based on her anticipated resignation. So the board at Eastland Fairfield, where she has received her offer, will meet to officially approve her contract on September 30th. So we are now discussing how that term will best work for us going forward. So we've had the opportunity to look to our educational service center for some assistance in this, and I just wanted to give a little information for our community, because I know not everybody is aware of what educational service centers are. We are aligned with the ESC of Central Ohio. They represent 30 districts by statute, by Ohio Revised Code. Every district under 16,000 students is required to align with an ESC. And in fact, regardless of size, every district in the state of Ohio, except for Toledo, interestingly, has aligned with an ESC. So the ESC of Central Ohio, I think as I said, represents 30 districts, including us. And we have had a comprehensive contract with them since 2002 that is renewed every year, obviously, because on an annual basis, that gives the contract contemplates our services, the responsibilities of the parties, the compensation for any of the services that they give. And then each year, we come up with a district service plan with them that sets forth the services that will be provided. So some of those are at no cost. They do professional development, and some that are cost, some are no cost. They have several peer-to-peer networks, which have been especially helpful to us during this COVID environment to help get collaboration across districts in our area to understand what other people are doing to move forward in this pandemic. And also, they do more specific things, which are a cost. And that's things like they contract substitute teachers for us. They do some special education services for us and the other 30 districts in their group. They do some special education services for us and, and the other 30 districts in their group. In addition to some mental health, health work, professional development, a whole array of things. And I would encourage people to go on their website and see the, the good work that they do for the students in our area. So we are fortunate that we have such a robust ESC in our area that we've been aligned with and have a very positive relationship with those leaders. And I'm, I'm very thankful for that, especially given this time. So we obviously have been working with them and for many years. And so when something, when Dr. Miller's pending resignation came before us, I reached out to them and asked them for some thoughts and help on the possibility of an interim superintendent. So we, as, I hope everybody would understand or, or agree that it's really important to us as board members that as we look for a full-time, long-term superintendent, that we have lots of understanding of what our community is looking for, a lot of stakeholder engagement on what we're doing. And that obviously takes time. I've been through this myself, Ms. Mitchell and Mr. Barno have already been through the process of looking for a superintendent. And we know that it, it does take a lot of time, generally, on the line of four or so months from when you first start posting to when you've gone through all the community interviews, interviews with staff, which is obviously critically important. And, and on to a finalist who will then be represented, will be brought to the board. So just as an aside, the, the state law in Ohio requires that there are only two individuals that the board ourselves, so as, as the board of five, we, we only hire, we hire, write an employment contract for two individuals. That's the superintendent and the treasurer. So we do the interviewing and the hiring and the ultimate recommendation. So, but obviously, we look to make sure that we have as much information from our community to make sure that we're making the right choice. So given all of that and the current environment that we're in, we felt that it was really important to have somebody who could step in now and guide us through these tumultuous times with hybrid learning and distance learning and contact tracing and all, all of the things that we are going through right now that really require firm leadership. So we have been in discussion with ESC for that, and I would like to offer at the, right now, a resolution that should help us move forward on that. And then I will state my resolution here and then have, ask for a motion and a second on it. And then the board will have the opportunity to discuss it before we vote. So I would like a motion wherein the board directs the treasurer to execute a statement of work through the Educational Service Center of Central Ohio for consultation services by Dr. Dan Good at no additional cost to the district for the anticipated transition of the superintendent's position.
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. So I will start off in saying, as we start our discussion, that there, I'm realizing there are a couple of things I didn't say about this resolution. The first is that there will be a period of time when Dr. Miller has not, she has not resigned her position yet because the contract is not firm through Eastland Fairfield until the 30th. So we want to make sure that we allow for transition time with Dr. Miller and, and then new interim, so that there can be a good handoff and a bridge of communications, which Dr. Miller is eager to do, and I, and I appreciate her, her help with that. So what we are looking to do is, is, in this resolution, is to work in this, I hate to say interim time, I shouldn't say this, this bridge time in between right now and our formal board meeting on October 6th. So when we meet in October 6th, we will have the opportunity to vote on a superintendent, an interim superintendent. So again, we'll not be addressing our next full-term forever, forever superintendent at the October 6th meeting. We'll be looking to hire an interim in that, in that position. We believe that we have found that person, and that is Dan Good from, formerly of Columbus City Schools and Westerville City Schools. He is an exceptional, exceptional educator, communicator, community collaborator. And I am thrilled to have somebody of his knowledge and, and depth of background available to us. So this would be a, a motion to allow for, for Dan to come and start working with our community until such time as we can hire him as the full interim superintendent on the 6th. So I think that's all I needed to say on my background now. Thank you, board members, for your patience on that. Does anybody have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Do we need to move to amend the agenda to entertain the motion? I don't, I'm not really sure.
Mr. Barno, you're fantastic with our amending the agenda. I had us put it in there, and then I don't always remember to do it. Yeah, so let's move on to board docs at the moment. It proper, it comes before this 3A, this other matters, this may properly come before the board. So let's just add a 3B. And Kyle, if you could put up in the board docs, the, I think I sent you my, the proposed motion that I just stated and had the second that's on the floor at the moment. So if you could post that for us, and then I'll ask for, whoops, did I lose you on?
Sorry, while, while I edit board docs, I'm going to unshare it. So that's all that's happening.
So do I, do I need to make a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes, thank you.
So, all right, so I'd like to make a motion to, to amend the agenda to consider the motion on the floor about...
Which is 3B.
Which is, which should be 3B, to consider the, the motion of directing Kyle to come to the agreement. I'm losing words here.
Not up there.
I'm moving, I'm moving to amend the agenda to include the discussion about bringing Dr. Good in as a consultant through ESC.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. Thank you. So Kyle, when you're ready for us, the, that was John as a, with the motion, and Alicia is the second. I do not have any cameras up. Can everybody else see each other?
Yep.
Who can see you?
You can? That's even worse. You can see me and I can't see you.
Have you got the speaker view?
Just a blank Zoom screen. Okay.
Maybe you minimized your screen. I don't know.
Sorry, let me just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna log out and zoom back in. I'll be right back. Ta-da. Okay, thank you. All right, so Kyle, were you able to put, are you still working on that?
I'm muted.
You're not muted. We can hear you.
Okay, working on it right now. Should be just a second.
Okay, thank you. So board members, that'll come up in a minute. But now that we have the, the approved motion to amend our agenda, I think we can start asking questions. Is any, and comments? Anybody want to bring up anything about the motion?
So I'll just start by saying, the way I understand what we're considering is that ESC has suggested or provided to us the opportunity to appoint Dan Good as a, right now, we're just considering him on an, for that bridge period that you talked about, so that we would have services of somebody who would help us through that period. And then on October 6th, we would consider whether to appoint him in the role of an interim superintendent, and then we would go forward from...
Right, and that would be our intention, for sure. Yeah, to, to go forward that way.
To go forward that way. And so I, having had the opportunity to look at Dr. Good's resume and, and look at his experience and the, the many, many years that he's served in superintendents in other districts in our greater community and the regard with which he is held in the communities where he has served. And Marley, I think you said that he's an exceptional communicator, an exceptional community builder, qualities that I think are very, very important for us, and, and I'm, I'm excited about it. I'm really grateful that ESC is working with us and that we have the chance to bring Dr. Good in, in this capacity that you've described pursuant to the things that we've been talking, you know, that the information that we've been provided with. I'm excited about, about this role for him and for our district.
Thank you. The other thing, Alicia, or, I'm sorry, Ms. Powers, as you were talking, I realized that, I'm not sure I made clear in my statement, but I believe it's clear in the motion, is that this bridge service is provided at no cost to us right now. The ESC is considering this period from now until October 6th, when we'll have Dr. Good available for consultation services as part of our general contract that they provide us with consultation as our educational service center. So it's, it's of no cost yet. And when we do go to look to employ an interim, that cost will be only that of Dr. Miller's compensation and then divided up monthly or per DM or whatever. So we will not be paying any more for an interim than we would for Dr. Miller.
At which time, we will no longer have the salary component for Dr. Miller, and we would just...
Exactly.
So, so that's a great transitional issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I was going to ask, and just to make sure I was clear, what we're doing with Dr. Good is, because we, we plan, you know, we have to wait for votes. All of this is tentative. As a board, we have already planned out our strategy here for this transition, to bring Dr. Good in under our existing contract with ESC at no charge, to bring him in to help this transition period until we can officially, if things with the, with Dr. Miller and with, with us, if everything's approved. This is all pending approval. These are just, we have to make these plans. And, and looking at Dr. Good as the person that we are hopefully going to, if we agree to appoint him on October 6th as our interim superintendent, that we already have him in place through ESC, so it makes it a lot more seamless. Is that kind of how we're looking at this?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Barno, because it is important to note that Dr. Miller is still our superintendent. And we, so we, until there has been approval by other, by a board other than ours, she will continue to be. So this is just that way to bridge the gap with the anticipation that that will happen, but with the knowledge that it hasn't happened yet.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, that I was clear and that the public understood of where we were. I mean, we have to, we have to make the plans in anticipation of what might likely, might likely happen, but there's no guarantee, and, and we just have to be ready to go. So I appreciate that and, and appreciate your work, Marley, with working with the ESC and kind of getting things in place. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would really like to just say I'm particularly excited about the opportunity, not only for Dr. Miller to pursue an opportunity she's excited about, but for us to be able to leverage our relationship with the ESC to bring in a talent like Dr. Good, to sort of allow us to not just focus on the negative that's happening. I mean, in a normal school year, it's busy and there's a lot to do. And this school year has presented itself as anything but. But just having, you know, his experience and his knowledge will allow us to focus on the work that we've all remained committed to do and that our administrative staff has been diligently committed to as well. So I know that, you know, it, it comes as a surprise for everyone, but I, and it's a surprise for us. And we wish only the very best for Dr. Miller. She has given us three years of exceptional redirection for our district, and, and we're excited to have someone that shares that vision and will help us to be able to continue it. So, you know, I, I, I know that this is all tentative, like Dr. or Mr. Barno said. And, you know, I think what folks may not realize is that we have to plan and continue to keep moving as a board of education, but for the district's sake. So this, these measures are the function of that work. So again, Ms. Snowden, thank you for helping facilitate that. I think our community will, will be put at ease that we're going to continue to do the work that we've always done. And I feel really positive about it, so thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Minio, do you have any?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and just say, I will say that I think, in general, times of transition are a little bit uneasy. We're, we're in a, we're in a time of unease, I think, in our world, anyway. Times of transition are a little bit, like, uneasy. So I'm, I'm, I'm happy, I feel, I feel comfortable. I feel good about the, the, the plan that we're kind of putting forth tonight. The idea that we're, we appreciate the work that Dr. Miller has done, the structure that she's created. We appreciate the work of the other leaders in our district, the other administrators in our district, that will keep us going. We're looking forward to having Dr. Good kind of come in and support us during the transition period. And then we're looking forward to our next steps to, to find leadership for the district going forward. And I do have to say again, Dr. Good, having, as Victor said, having reviewed Dr. Good's resume, he does bring a lot of, like, strength to the district in, in areas that we have been discussing. And I think especially, I think we're going to be looking at communication and how to grow that, and how, uh, community engagement, and how he can help us facilitate that in ways that we are hoping to do.
And I just want to just add, you know, emphasize and amplify what Ms. Minio just said about our existing leadership in our, in our district right now. Dr. Williams, Ms. Abraham, and, and all of the leadership that we have. I'm so very grateful for their roles. They've been working incredibly hard through this process of this year, which has been challenging. And their strengths and their abilities are going to help us with continuity and, and ongoing important leadership. And I'm grateful for ESC and our partnership with them. And I'm very grateful for our existing leadership in, in, in those leaders and in Kyle Smith, folks that are leading our district and will continue to help lead our district. And that's really, really important to us at that, at this time. So I'm grateful for all of that.
Thank you. Well said and important. Yeah, there's just a lot of work still to be done. Does anybody else have any other comments? Okay, so we now have a motion and a second to approve item 3B, which is found now on board docs. With that motion and second, I think.
Can I just clarify that this just really takes us through to our October 6th board meeting, right?
Yes. Okay. So we will revisit and have a full statement of work, which is the contract that we have with ESC. And in case I wasn't clear, the contract that we have for employment with, that we will look to sign with for Dr. Good's interim role with us, the contract will be held with the ESC as well. They are his employer, and we are, for lack of a better word, leasing him through them. So that will go in as a statement of work from the ESC, just like our other statements of work for, for services that they provide us.
And so, Marley, as I understand it, being the newbie, the statement of work is, is just a way of sort of adding an additional service that they would provide to our underlying contract.
Exactly, and it'll set forth terms and conditions and all that kind of thing.
Yep, got it. Thank you.
So with that motion and second, Kyle, since this has to do with personnel, I'm assuming we need a roll call vote?
You can certainly do it that way.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead, then.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Bono?
Yes.
Ms. Minio?
Just unmute.
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes, thank you. So that motion passes. I want to thank everybody for their work around this. I, yeah, I appreciate the, the work of everybody on our executive leadership team, especially. So again, Mr. Smith, our treasurer, Mr. Pettit, our director of pedagogy, Dr. Williams, and, and Jill Abram. It's, the amount of work right now is substantial, and I'm very, very grateful. And I want to add, as we go in, as, since we have the opportunity before we started in the hybrid, I really want to thank our teachers and our principals and support staff and our cleaning staff. We are moving into a new phase that we're, I think we're all cautiously excited about. So I really appreciate everybody's dedication to the goal of educating our students. And again, I ask our community for patience and grace as we move forward in those efforts. So with that, can I have a motion to approve tonight's meeting?
Adjourned. I so moved.
Did I say, yeah, motion to adjourn? Thank you.
The second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Any opposed, same sign? Okay, this motion's adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Marley.